Johnson, would you give us the indication, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together as leaders of our county. We thank you for life help and for strength in all that you continue to do. We ask you to bless this meeting that it may be fruitful in helping us move forward in Marbury County. We thank you for all the minds that are around this table, allow us to be on one accord with you in the million that we may be able to guide our county to greater heights, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, move on to the, uh, final review.
Uh, if you remember when we did the budget this year, the costs I think were a little higher than they had and had with high conditions, uh, in the rural and within the county. So we've, uh, begun a more detailed review on a quarterly basis of our expenditure. So we're gonna run through that today, but you know, that'll lead into, gotta be brief, and it'll lead into the recreation, uh, information. So, uh, as you look at the first quarter, which is the first three months, end of July, you'll sit, we'll, and I gave you a couple of handouts, but don't show some of this, but I'll put those in there. You know, we should be at twenty-five percent, you know, that's what you do, figure out where you should be, we should be at twenty-five percent. We're slightly over the twenty-five, but not tremendous anymore, um, not even twenty-six. Revenue coming in is lower, not lower than normal, but lower than twenty-five percent. But that's, that's normal because our money comes in around that time. So, you know, even years past, when the council really was struggling to even pay the light bill, they would have to, um, straight borrow our money and make payroll until taxes came in. And we fortunately not had to do that in ten or fifteen years. So those things are okay. One thing that, um, of note is that as far as expenses go, we're spending a whole lot more money than we did in the past. And what I mean by that is, we had, um, more vacancies in the past, and I, we talked about that before, it helped kind of build a buffer. And now that we've, uh, done things with the sheriff's office to help with their starting salaries and all that, we're seeing more, uh, the vacancies being filled. So we're spending more than we normally would this time of year, but still, still close to, uh, twenty-five percent. And so what we do with staff, as we end the month, which we just ended the month, you know, yesterday, you know, yesterday we were all scrambling around getting the stuff together. We're trying to report and we'll look at, you know, anything that looks out of rack or things that we need to understand so that we can manage that moving forward. Um, and of course, you know, we're concerned about things that if they continue to be over at that rate, they could have a big impact. And, you know, and we have to be careful that grants and things like that, you know, that we're covered on that as we move forward. So the first report we have, and this is hot off the presses, um, shows, uh, shows where we are and how much of our budget is, uh, is over budget for the quarter. And then if you go all the way to the right, or almost to the right, it shows, you know, if, um, if it continues going at that rate, you know, how it could potentially affect the cost. And I, I give the sheriff one, because he's been on there a few times, and he has, together with the largest department in the county with detention, the sheriff department. So naturally, you know, he's gonna be on there, um, and sometimes you have EMS or those kind of things on there. So you see those lines, um, are the things that we'll be talking with the department heads or electing with officials to understand and see which way we're going. So we don't, um, hopefully don't end up with the impact you see in the column here. And if we do, we come to you all and say, you know, we've got, we've got to figure something out. So, I can answer your questions while I don't read them to you, you've got a copy to look at. But we, you know, the first one's a really, really big one, but you only pay it once a year, so some of them are like that. Where you'll have something out of rack, but you don't have to do it anymore. You know, I didn't include these on there, but when you're looking at variances on your budget, you also want to look at things that are way under because, you know, there's something wrong there. So we do that too, but we didn't include those on here. So these are the primary ones that we'll be, uh, you know, trying to understand and move forward with. Any questions about that?
Is that from the same time this, this time this year as it was kind of last year too, or is it just?
How much was in the budget for this year and how much has been spent this year for this twenty, for the first part of the year? Okay?
The overtime is, I mean, I, I think it just, I guess, look like the two big ones were, uh, the sheriff salaries and overtime and the detention center overtime. Is that with, with vacancies or without vacancies, or?
I don't know, I mean, I'm trying to turn it on him so he can look at it and we can probably report back to you because. But, um, that's, it's just overtime part of it, it's not salaries and overtime, it's just overtime.
Oh, okay.
Now, you know, the sheriff will tell you, you know, he had to help cover in McCall when they didn't have a certified officer and, um, he and I spoke about that on a temporary basis, we just absorbed that, it's about, what, fifty-nine hundred dollars? And Sheriff, she's got the detail on that. Um, so that comes out, and then moving forward, if we, if he has to continue that, we'll have to have some arrangement with McCall where they'll have to pay us back. So, um, we'll be, you know, we'll be getting more information and we'll be able to discuss it in more detail to you, but, because this is hot off the presses as of yesterday. Okay? And we do have a couple of, uh, immediate needs that, uh, may or may not, may require a budget amendment at some point. EMS is in need of a competitive wage adjustment. Um, we did one last year, and then other places around us have done them, and it's, it's a game you're playing. And as soon as you go up a little bit, everybody else goes up a little bit. But it's, um, in our director's opinion, it is hindering him hiring some of the paramedic level positions particularly. Uh, we've looked at what's in the budget and the revenue estimates, looks like there's about a hundred thousand dollars. This is again, like a three million dollar budget, so it's a lot of money in there, um, available. So we'll be looking at this and bringing that to you, uh, approval, or to consider, consider approving next council meeting. And then another one, Sheriff's here, I mean, made him sit there while we're ready, but he, uh, has an interest in buying some more vehicles. You want to speak to that, Sheriff?
Yes, sir, please. I want you guys to get, to basically get in just around the top of my ear. And thank you for allowing me to take this time, this workshop, to do this. Back in, uh, talking about December, about the December sometime, we were informed, should I, between December and January, end up between December and January, so some, between December and the end of January, we were, uh, informed that we needed to start looking at vehicles for this coming year. And, um, at, at that time, we were not aware that vehicles had not been, uh, I won't say budgeted for, but nothing had been put in place as far as getting vehicles. I would have always thought or considered that every year you get four or five vehicles, so you got ongoing cars that's always in place. So once we started this process, we started looking at vehicles, how many we had, how many we needed to replace based on mileage. So we've had some vehicles with over, right now we've got five with over a hundred and, I would say roughly averaging about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty thousand miles on some that we have now that we drive on a daily basis. And with that being said, we needed about eighteen vehicles, and all those eighteen vehicles, four of those vehicles had to do with, um, two being for new SROs, which the, the school district would be paying for those two, and two for new house, where we're getting two new officers. And that would make four, and that's actually what the county ended up ordering was four vehicles. Uh, but during the process, when we started back in, in January, um, we contacted a couple of places because we are getting vehicles through, um, Enterprise. That's a contract that we have through Enterprise, and we're in the process of helping them find vehicles because we found out that Dodge were no, Dodge is no longer making Durango's, and basically that's the car of choice for most law enforcement agencies. So we reached out to see where we could find some vehicles, because now Ford Rangers is seen to be the, the going thing, which we have no control over what, who makes what and what they sell, we just have to buy what we can get our hands on. So in the process of doing that, we located, uh, we were able to reach out to a company, um, in, um, Patsville, really some Manning, South Carolina. And we talked with them back in January, and they gave us some quotes of thirty-five thousand for each vehicle, which was lower than most places, because most places were thirty-seven thousand. We didn't hear anything from them until last week. We do have four coming in, and like I said, those are two for the, um, the new officers and two SROs. Uh, we have no extra vehicles in our parking lot now, uh, we're using spares. There's just nothing there. We've got a couple, like I said, we got five that's over a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, um, miles on them. So these vehicles that we just found out about, they call us about, uh, thirty-seven thousand. We know and understand these same vehicles this time next year, when we make out order, we have to order vehicles, uh, let me be clear. Uh, because if we don't order vehicles, we're still driving cars with over a hundred, forty, a hundred and fifty thousand miles. So vehicles have, will have to be ordered this coming year, this coming budget year, which is next year. Which means it's still probably gonna take another year before the vehicles even get here, so we're talking about a year and a half away, that we're gonna be driving five cars with over a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand miles. They're not gonna last. If we can get these two vehicles, and that's why I'm here today, it would help us. These same vehicles, like I said, in January were thirty-five thousand, a little over thirty-five, now they're thirty-seven. These same vehicles next year would be forty-five, around forty-five or forty-seven. So if we could get these two vehicles, we're gonna save ten thousand dollars per vehicle this year. Understanding that we will have to order vehicles next year, so what we would be doing, if we can get, if you will agree to us getting these two vehicles, that's two less than we have to get next year, and add at a better savings or a better cost. And I understand that it's not budgeted, I understand that. But even if we wait till next year, it's gonna cost us more money if we take it out, that's just two less than we get next year. So we're gonna save twenty thousand dollars at least. But if we wait, it's gonna cost us twenty thousand additional money, plus we got cars that stand in the shop every day, just about, mine is in the shop right now. Um, we just spent five thousand dollars on one for, uh, a transmission, and guess what, it didn't work when we got it fixed. It lasted about a week, it's back in the shop again. So we're, we're paying for maintenance on, on vehicles, that, that's one. Uh, it's, those cars are just like me and the rest of us, uh, the longer we last, the worse we get, uh, that's just the truth.
When's the last time, I know there was a rotation of getting?
It's been three years since they ordered vehicles, since we've ordered vehicles. And I can't say whose fault it is, and it may be nobody's fault, it's just, I, I guess some people look at, we don't need it, so we don't order it. But that's not looking forward. If we're, if, and I hear what you're saying, it should have been on rotation, and I wouldn't be standing here if it was on rotation because we'd have new vehicles. And they would have been ordered already.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought, I thought with the Enterprise, there was a, a rotation of every so often that the vehicles would come. I mean, I, yeah, I mean, it happens, and we had COVID coming along, so that's what I.
Well, somebody didn't, and, and.
And I know cars are hard to find, too, I mean, I know.
You don't know how hard they are.
With COVID, it kinda, I mean, that was a.
There's only two I've been now, um, Tahoe's and, and Ford Rangers. That's, that's about the only thing you're gonna get your hands on.
Were those on the state contract, the state bidding?
Yes, sir. Well, anything, even with certain companies, I'll use one in Columbia, I won't call her name. But there's a company in Columbia that's not on state contract, but because cars are so hard to get, they're selling to you at that same price as state contract. Because they're just that difficult to find cars, and some people have cars online. Um, this particular company had sixty Tahoe's sitting in their yard, that they were willing to sell at the same price, and somebody jumped on.
Now, I don't know if I would, those, I guess all the laws work with the state contract this and that, I don't know, I know we have to follow up certain things, I just.
This is a state contract.
What, what were these vehicles here, you said, I, I missed that?
There are, there are Ford Rangers, if I'm not mistaken, hold on one second. Yeah, there are four Rangers. And they have, they have considered this Ford, police interceptors, they don't call them. Rangers are, even with the Durango's, everything's a police interceptor now, basically, ever since they went back to.
That, is that a car, SUV, just for clear?
Yes, it's an SUV.
SUV.
I, I don't see a need for cars in a county, because they have to go across fields and through the woods. And we had one bottom out, one of those Tauruses bottom, uh, Charger bottom out trying to get through a field. I don't see why you do that, and these are four, four, four-wheel drive. I mean, because we have to go places, cars shouldn't be going, I won't say they can't go, but they should. Right if you come through fields, trucks, SUVs is what we need, that's just the truth. And I hope you, again, you would consider, again, these vehicles are thirty-seven thousand, back in January they were thirty-five, this time next year they're gonna be forty, forty-five. Based on what I got, I'll read it to you verbatim. Now, this estimate is based on, based off the new state contracts that you can read, that you can view online. So the contract number on the estimate is valid, and the new twenty-twenty-three PIU starts at forty-three ninety-four. For a base model traffic, you know, and once you have the options included, the PIU that we were gonna set would be closer to forty-six. And that's coming, the new cars in the twenty-twenty-threes. We're looking at twenty-twenty-two that, that they have, uh, and that we contacted them about this. As a matter of fact, we did this quote back in January. Again, they're gonna go up. I, I'm trying to save money anyway, I know how. And it's a cost. The amount of people we got and the service that we provide is hard. It's hard. And, and we're in a good position, y'all, believe it or not. We don't pay money like the other places. We don't. Dalton just got a seven thousand dollar raise across the board for all their people. They're already four or five thousand dollars ahead, so some of those guys are making ten thousand dollars more than some of our guys. But we're full and they're short. About money, if I can save it, now's the day for me to sit here and say we can save some money. This time next year is gonna cost us more money. And I know it may not be in the budget, but it's some money that won't be, that, that, that we can take out the budget for next year. We'll save money next year. Because eventually you got about a car, eventually you got about.
How many cars do you think next year?
We wanted eighteen.
Okay, but, but see, I'm, but see, I, I hear what you're saying.
Yep.
I, I got five. I got, hold on.
Right now, just to replace what we need, and I'm, I'm counting them based on what I'm looking at. It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. This is about fourteen. Can I get a way of listening to that? Yes, uh, but I'm, I'm being realistic, but, but if, if we could order five cars a year, four cars a year, and keep turning them over. Because we can sell these cars, if we're getting them, if we're getting rid of them at ninety to a hundred thousand miles, you can get seven to ten thousand dollars back off of them through gov.com. What you do is, is we bid them out, and somebody will pay ten, twenty, they'll pay ten thousand dollars for them. So i- if we can do four or five cars a year, that's reasonable, based on what we're doing, and the amount of miles that they put on cars.
If you figure for five cars next year, we get these two.
I'll take three. I'm, 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 I'm doing what I can, then the following year we probably won't ask for five more. But, but, and, I don't know, I know it's not gonna get any easier, I know it's not gonna get any cheaper. This year alone, these cars have already gone up two thousand dollars. Everything is, is based on need. I don't care what we want in, in life, it's based on need, and whoever, whoever has what we need has the ability to charge more for them. If that makes sense.
Yeah, and, you know, none of us don't know what next year.
I don't.
It could be that we could.
In any way financially. I, I, I think that, that Brian will tell you, we talk about it, um, next week I'm gonna bring up that there's something we need, uh, and I told him, I, he knows what I'm about to say, uh, about, we don't have a generator in our building. We don't have a broken one, we don't have a generator at the sheriff's department. So when the lights go out, we can't get in our own building, because we use fobs. We can't get in the building, the computer goes out, everything shuts down. When that building was designed, somebody neglected to put, uh, 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 a generator in it. Well, we've been able to secure hopefully a couple of grants that are, hopefully, and we're gonna talk about this, we talked about it, grants that we don't have to pay anything for them. The captain's working on them right now. I'm trying anyway I can think of to save money, but still get the things that we need, not what we want, the things that we need. We went down this weekend over that storm, we couldn't get warrants, we couldn't do anything. Heck, we couldn't even get in the building. Now that's the truth. And these things have obviously never been addressed. But those are things that need to be addressed. Go to your house and can't get in and tell me how you feel. Lose your key and see how crazy you go.
Well, yeah, I meant, I meant, sorry, but the, the last time, I mean, I know we were on a rotation with these, with the sheriff's cars, you, I mean, what, I mean, I, I guess it's a lot, I, I just can't remember, I remember, I remember we had something, but I just don't remember.
It's all about money, you know, when you raise taxes five mil, spend a bunch of money, and we couldn't buy cars and do that, too.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah.
I mean, I mean, that's all it is, I mean, every, the points he makes were accurate, the points that we all know that he's being a rotational actor. But when you go, and you, we'll talk about it in a minute, and you look at things that we've done in the county, and, and they were warranted. You know, the overtime change we made before Sheriff's appeal was there, and we used money that could have been used for that. It's a, it's a split, you know, go from the bottom to split saving, you know, what are you, what are you gonna do? So this is just a limited amount of money.
Yeah, and I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm worried now, I mean, I don't know if anybody, but, you know, I, I think about move off, about not having them next year if that's, that's not on our, we don't get taxes in there, I don't know what it'd be, a half a million to three quarters of a million dollars that we, we might not, I mean, I don't know a, a number, I mean, but I, I, it's in the back of my head, I, you know.
Six hundred thousand.
Six hundred thousand, so that's ten mils that we just, you know, what, how, how are we gonna do that with, like, where, you know, with everything still on the rise? So, yeah, I mean, uh, I was just wondering, I couldn't remember how, I mean, I, you know, you just, you get so much and you're trying to remember so much of it, I, but I, yeah, with the overtime, okay, I, I understand now, so I was just, I just couldn't remember, uh.
Well, anything, anything you do now is not the budget, it's gonna require, and I'm not, not just this, anything you have to do is not the budget, you don't have to come out of reserve. We just, just need to know that, I mean, you know. There, there may be something justified, you know, and maybe this, that's your, that's your problem, to make that decision, but just wanna make sure you understand that. When in the past years, we always had a little bit of a buffer from vacancies and things, you know. We had a buffer for sometimes for wrong reasons, but we had a buffer, and I mean, that's, it's a good word, you'll see that. You know, the, the Enterprise thing worked well, but initially we called it forced maintenance, we had issues with maintenance before we came. And, um, and so, you know, we liked that, I think there was some frustration because, hey, the sheriff and Doug and someone sat down like, well, here's vehicles we think we can get, let's get the one that'll get here quickest, and maybe one choice didn't get here quick as the others, but with supply chain, that's a crap shoot. But just the important thing to know is, you know, as you have requests from the sheriff or whoever, you, you gotta, you gotta weigh, you gotta borrow that, because it's gonna have to come out of reserve.
So do we make a decision on spending more money next year? We're buying cars, that's gonna be almost ten thousand dollars or more than what we can pay for it this year? And, you know, make some provisions there? Either way, we're gonna have to buy cars.
That's right, I mean, that's a good point, I mean, in a normal time, next year you need a heavy load of cars because you, because you missed a year in there. But it's kinda like, you know, you got five dollars in your pocket, somebody will sell you Cadillac for two hundred dollars, you've got five dollars, you can't buy a Cadillac. So, several issues there is, I mean, in normal times, in normal times, um, yeah, I think you could get ahead of it. In, in abnormal times, you're spending, you're spending money out of next year's budget before you hit the next year. And the concern is, you know, is revenue gonna, um, make up for the losses, well, which we think maybe, you know, or you have other, and this, I've got like three slides of this.
Okay.
But in, in, in a, for, you know, it's common sense, if you save money, save money. And if you have the money, it's common sense to do that, and y'all know you wanna do that, I deserve. But as far as obligating things for next year, you gotta be very, very careful.
Sheriff, and where are you in, um, the federal prison, um, sending inmates to, to redeem some income from that venture?
Two weeks prior to the last council meeting, we were informed that we were in good standings and where we needed to be to acquire the contract. Federal government's year begins October one, so anything that they would do when it comes to, when it comes to contracts or anything like that, wouldn't have started until October one. So if we were gonna sign a contract with them, it would have been October, it would be now, they couldn't do it before October one. We have gone through the process contractually, we've gone through the per diem, we've come up with a per diem, a per diem of sixty-seven dollars per person, per inmate. And this is quick rough math. I'm confident, and, and I think they're confident, they being, uh, the marshal's office is confident that we're gonna get the contract. We're confident that we're gonna get the contract at sixteen inmates. Sixteen inmates at sixty-seven, sixty-seven dollars per inmate, at the end of the day is gonna come somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars, give or take. The actual cost per diem, per inmate is eighteen dollars based on our, what we came up with, the numbers that we got from everybody, it's roughly eighteen dollars, which means we're clear at thirty-nine dollars per inmate. Thirty-nine dollars per, per inmate at thirteen, thirty-nine dollars at sixteen comes to somewhere around two hundred and something dollars, so we will probably clear, clear. After revenue, the revenue and everything should come somewhere around two hundred and something thousand dollars of revenue per year with sixteen inmates. Our like, at the end of three months, should we get this contract, at the end of three months, we can't renew a contract, so, which we can't go back and change the per diem, but we can add more inmates to it. Our facility holds ninety-six inmates. We now are housing, I'd say roughly forty to forty-five inmates, which gives us fifty more inmates we could get. With the sixteen, it brings up to like sixty, right at sixty, which means three months if we wanted to, we could get sixteen more, and you can double whatever that number I've been talking about. I'm confident, unless somebody's lying to me, that we're gonna get this contract. I'm expecting to hear something, I'm expecting somebody to make a phone call and find out just where we are in the next day or two. If that happens, then we're in good shape. I mean, let me take that back, we still are in good shape, but there's more revenue coming into the county. Once that revenue comes in, I'm gonna ask that we get, we being the sheriff's office and the detention center gets twenty, seventy-five percent of that that comes in for our, for our operational needs. And twenty-five percent of it will go straight to general funds. Seventy-five percent will come to, to, to the sheriff's office and detention center. Twenty-five percent would then go to general funds to be used however. That way, we're helping do the things that we need, we're helping to get the cars that we need, and anything operational that we need, we're pretty much be doing all we can to take care of us as best as we can. I'm trying everything I can to do what I can to help. I'm not here to take, I'm not here to, to be a, a, I'm not here to do anything but to help and still provide the best service we can. Because if we can't get what we need, we can't help you. If we ain't got cars, we can't go to cars. I mean, we can go to cars, but you're gonna hire thirty-two officers and two, and they, uh, two or three or four of them riding in the same car together, which ain't helping nobody. I mean, if cars don't work, they don't have any choice but to either walk or ride with somebody else. Am I looking, I promise y'all, I'm looking for everywhere I possibly can to make money and to save money, not to spend it, because it hurts me, I'm a taxpayer too. I'm just like everybody sitting in this room, it costs me to live here too. But I'm gonna ask to do something, and if I ain't doing it, somebody else is gonna have to do it. The problem is, has it been done the right way in the past? Are we in a position right now because of the past? Or are we in a position because things just haven't been done?
Well, we definitely wanna help you and, and help sheriff's department as much as we can. Any more questions? Do you have any questions for us? All right, well, I know we got a lot of other stuff on this agenda.
Just a quick thing, one is still here.
Okay. I, I guess my question would be, because I gotta call these people to let them know, because they're holding these cars, and I don't know, it seems like I'm being.
You can't take, I mean, I guess you could take action, but you, two weeks, you have different time to take action.
Yeah, we, we can't wait on it.
Okay. I appreciate your time.
I'm gonna say something, I think the revenue from the, the con, federal contract is the right thing, I mean, you know, you can do with it what you want, you know, based on what he's saying, but I, I mean, I would be highly recommended that it be earmarked, you know, set aside for all enforcement purposes. I, in fact, I don't know that we would wanna depend on it in the general fund for anything except, you know, one-time things. But that would be a huge help, and I think it would help him get what he needs quickly, uh, once it starts flowing in. That's a good thing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I do what I can to help, all I can, but at the same time, I need your help.
Now, we might, we may have to have another. We might, we may have to have another meeting or, or something.
They need it two weeks.
Yeah.
That's my problem. Um, I asked somebody to hold it before, and we lost them. But when you lose them, you lose them. And, and, uh, uh, I'm just asking for help. I'm not demanding, I'm not here saying that you gotta do something. I'm just saying we need the help. We need the cars.
How long does that quote go for?
Um, they wanted it last week. We asked them to wait till in the morning.
Say it again.
They said that they're gonna get, they could get rid of them last week. We asked them to hold it until tomorrow. And, and I apologized. I was thinking, and, and this is my ignorance, that I didn't know you couldn't do it right now.
But we've been having on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand, and that's on me. And that's my fault. Uh, but I do intend to call this, call these guys and see what, if they're willing to hold something or do something. And, and I'll do that. I can do that. But that's my fault. That, that's me not doing my homework like I should have. And that won't ever happen again. I promise you that.
If you can get them to extend that quote, I would suggest that.
I mean, I ain't extending the quote. This makes somebody gonna come in there with cash money and, that's, that's the key.
We couldn't amend the agenda? It's been amended before?
Yeah. Let me just want to discuss it with them. I would make a suggestion.
Let me, let me ask you a couple of questions. My favorite questions you have to ask yourself, do you wanna do it? I guess the other question is the financial impact, and I'm, obviously you can buy it outright. Um, we have been leasing things, which limits, which reduces the, uh, which reduces the impact for each year, but does add it to future years. So that's something that we have a concern about. Those are the questions. I mean, you know, if there's five people in here that wanna amend them, begin amending the budget and, and buy this out of reserve, then that's y'all's.
No, that, that, that's my biggest question, 'cause I know we haven't been renting these things. Um, I mean, I, I'd love to look into.
Well, they don't necessarily have to go through enterprise. They can, we can do our own leasing, but we, we would have to put something in place to do that. So I guess the biggest question is, you know, if the council wants to, how much really against you?
Thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven, thirty-seven.
So seventy, seventy-five, what? Yeah, about seventy-five thousand dollars out of reserve, um, to buy the, the, the two vehicles.
I would think buying them would put us way too much in budget. I mean, I thought we would have to, at least look into renting these things.
Well, again, you know, we're, we're deep into what we're getting ready to try to give you some information on is you're, if you lease them, you're adding costs on the next year if we're ever getting the next year. That's what's killing us. I mean, a huge amount of budget amendments in the last two years, you know, it's killing us. We're, we're, this year, we had one point two million dollar revenue growth. We ate it all up with stuff that had happened before. So, you know, if you, in, in, in next year's budget, I think we would be saying we're gonna lease them. If you're gonna do it right now, then I think you just pay for it. But it is coming out of reserve, so you keep that in mind, so.
Let me ask you this. If, if we borrow outright on a leasing program, that's a maintenance program as well, right?
No, we have to pay for maintenance. It's just, the enterprise thing, at the time, this is before Sheriff McNeil was here. At the time, we weren't, in our opinion, the, the maintenance wasn't up to the level it needed to be. We were not using like the dealership or certain things or, you know, 'cause cars now, you can't work on them in backyard anymore.
Right.
So with enterprise comes, you know, some direction at that time to take it here, take it there. We still have to pay for it. So it was, um, it was a big move forward to start doing it that way. Now, if you did, if we did our own leasing or if we did paying out, I think now we're at a, at a place where the sheriff's gonna continue to use the same people we use for the other vehicles. So we're gonna get that quality maintenance. That's not an issue like it was. It was more of a decision thing, operating thing back then from sheriff's department. Now that's not an issue.
So I see no advantage of, of, of leasing, you know, of waiting on, on the lease.
Well, it's not as much money out front, out of the budget.
But it's gonna be more money in the budget if you wait.
Well, I know I'm not, I couldn't vote on this today. I mean, I, I would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look into it myself so much. I mean, I.
You don't have a date, Mr. Chair. Sometimes you have to make a decision.
Thirty-seven thousand dollars to forty thousand dollars for, for the car? I mean, I don't think we need to junk on it.
I mean, I think that's what, that's what they cost now, right? That's, that thirty-seven thousand, that's a replacement for the Duran that brought it.
Yeah, that's.
That's just what car I bought.
Here, here's where it boils down to at the end of the day. You're gonna pay seventy-two now, a ninety-two later. It's still the same money. I don't need any home. And that's just the way I see it now. You either pay now, or you pay later. If you pay later, you pay more. That's just the truth.
That's it.
I mean, I, I, I know they, I mean, just, I don't know who you're dealing with. I mean, they're, they were, we were having to hold a vehicle for us for a couple of weeks. I mean, we, we, we found one, they're hard to find, but we asked the dealer to hold us, hold one for a couple of weeks, and he, he honored, he honored it. I mean, so, you know, he, he.
And I would make that phone call. He tells me no. Like, we were holding them before, but somebody else was holding them before, and I got a phone call from the sheriff. Called me, I'm saying, hey man, just wanna let you know I got your cars. I said, huh? He said, I got your cars. He bought even one to have with cash. I mean, let's be honest. Some of you are business people, of cash talks. Y'all, y'all bought, y'all bought paid different things in the past, as a businessman. And as business, I'm, that's what I'm about. The sheriff's department is a business.
Sheriff, if I'm even hard, I would like to make a, make a motion to amend the, uh, agenda to, um, allow us to, um, take action on this matter.
I'm, I'm sure there's more than one data load that we could deal with, other than what you're talking about.
Oh, yeah, well, that, that's fine.
Well, let me, let me, I'll say one, one thing now. I think he's addressed this already, but somebody asked how state contract works. You need to understand that, because I don't wanna get in conflict with the sheriff while they're on, but I mean, it has to be on state contract, which I think has been resolved, or it has to be bid out. So when we buy things, that's why he's having to go around and find one that's on, or equivalent of state contract. Is that correct?
That's right. And, and when we say there are other businesses, everybody's looking for cars. I, I mean, we're not just sitting here. They're out there, that there is no cars. When you find one, it's gold. I mean, this is gold.
Well, I, I'm gonna tell you, I just, I, I was not expecting this, you know, today. And, I mean, I, I know you, it's on, y'all wanna vote.
Well, you have to make two, you have to make a motion to amend the agenda. Then you have to make a motion to vote on it if you pass the first thing, just so, as you know.
To just talk, to talk about it.
Yeah. And I guess, you know, so I, I heard, I'm just being the corker, I heard a motion to amend the agenda.
All right, so the floor, hoping to discuss.
You gotta vote, gotta vote on the agenda.
Oh, okay, exactly. Sorry. Thank you. All right, um, all right, we have a motion if we want to amend the agenda to discuss, uh, the sheriff's increase in cars, um, in a second. And I'm in favor? I'm, I'm being in favor for discussing it.
Yeah, for interest. Where you gonna, where you gonna put it at?
Uh, we'll, we'll put it.
All right, so what, um, yeah, I make, um, well, to, I don't wanna take a direct motion, but I would like to begin the discussion by saying, you know, the economics of part of it, it makes sense to do it now. Because we're, if you, if you, the way I understand, um, what I think I heard was that if you deliberate the decision and, uh, make the, and make the decision to lease, that will come out of next year's budget. Which we, like Mr. Black said, we don't know what next year's budget is gonna look like. We don't know whether we're gonna be able to absorb, um, the Mohawk laws or not. Um, but we can borrow, in a sense, borrow out of the general, uh, out of our.
So you're not borrowing, you're gonna spend it in reserve.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and just make that purchase now, which would save us about ten to twenty.
Now.
That's the way I understand it.
Where, where's our reserve at now, comparison to operations?
It's right around six months operating, you know, as you take, how much it takes to operate a county times six months is where the auditors want it to be. So, you know, I don't have, we're being audited right now, but it's, it's in that level. And from, not to interrupt y'all, but, you know, from a staff perspective, if you're gonna do this, then no lease, just buy it out of capital, and you, the motion ought to have a, a max amount, which I, you know, eighty thousand dollars on the cover of getting it and getting it here and all that. And that it has to be your procurement code, which I think it does. You can't get out of that because we get audited on that. But I think he's worked that out. I can say that more concisely if you want me to. And the motion would be to approve the sheriff's request to buy two vehicles to, to use, uh, number one eighty thousand dollars of the fund balance. And that the purchase meets the, uh, county procurement code.
I make a motion that we amend the budget to purchase the vehicles under the specification that our county administrator just added.
A second. All right, there's a, there's a motion. In a second.
Oh, is that an amend or is that a purchase?
To purchase.
Oh, the purchase. Okay, I got you. Okay, I got you.
And just to buy two more cars. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, um, so we, we have a motion on the floor? All in favor?
I, I would like to be in favor with a couple of stipulations. I mean.
We, we call for a vote, so.
I, I just wanna make sure that, um, with the revenue coming, when, when do you think the revenue will start with the? Obviously, as soon as we start getting inmates, there's two of them, they'll be paying us off. Could, could we put the first money coming back to go towards these two cars, so we can get it back quicker? I'm, I'm just trying to. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Again, yes, sir. I, I, I wanna help, but I wanna know where it's coming from.
So we're gonna make a motion to just amend it, say that, that, um.
We, we would reimburse the county based on the operational funds that we get in. Is that fair?
I, I mean, that, that's what I would.
And I don't have a problem. Again, I am not doing anything to try to get what we need.
I would feel better like that.
I'm even gonna try to sell a hundred two cars and let it go back in the general fund.
Okay, I can deal with it. Long as we know we're gonna get it back.
Ms., Dr. Johnson?
I make a motion that we amend the budget to purchase the two vehicles for the sheriff's department upon these specifications, um, that the county, um, our county administrator has, with this indication that Sheriff McNeil and the sheriff's department will reimburse the county out of the money coming from the, um, federal inmates.
I'd gladly go on with that, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, uh, as, as, as mentioned, um, all in favor? Right. All in favor, unanimous.
All right. I, I wanna thank you. Y'all just know, and I'll be honest, I, I get a little something sometimes, but it's tough. Y'all know, do you know how to tell a citizen to be kind or how to tell a citizen? I got a twelve forty the night before last, and I didn't get a chance to go back to bed until ten o'clock last night. It's tough.
All right, Sheriff, is there, is there any way you can, uh, try to come down on the overtime? I mean, we're, we're gonna really.
Yes, sir. I, I can. I have to tell you, in the past three months, we've been able to get everybody certified. And the problem with getting certified, we had to have a whole week to get over it. And not their certified. Those three hundred and seventy-two hours that you may see on the menu from a call is all time in the head, so it's really not three hundred and seventy-two, it's more like five hundred and something dollars at hour cost. And, and that's a bunch of money. Uh, I met with the mayor, we need again tomorrow, um, to reduce the work hours that we have in McColl, you know, they now have a certified person, a worker's gonna cover them from now on. We have a certified person that's not again, but with the expectation that County McColl will then start reimbursing us for that cost.
Well, Sheriff, Sheriff, we talked, and we, you know, he's trying to help them out, but if we move forward with this, we need an agreement passed by county council with the town of McColl, because it's gonna eat us alive if we don't. I mean, and that's illegal. I mean, that's what's supposed to happen. And it could be an agreement that if you had to activate it, it would be already there, and if you unactivated it, you didn't have to use that. But they, we need that. And it's, it's, it's only five, it's only right now at six thousand dollars. It's not as much as, you know, you think with that three seventy-two. We worked it up and it's about six thousand dollars, but, um, you know, we're pinching pennies up here.
Can we put some on the agenda afterward?
That was my question to Sheriff, uh, we've approved almost six thousand dollars. Is there any extra amount of town? I mean, the money's in the budget outside of this call.
It is, and, uh.
And we, we should, uh.
We were just trying.
Refund, refund it that much.
We were trying to help, we were trying to help. And please keep in mind, Cloud is a, I can say this club here that if you blow your mind, that things aren't where they need to be, like different places. And I'm just being honest. But, but Cloud, like, that far from the situation.
Well, you could, you could pass an agreement that applied to both, and it had, and, you know, you were bound to that, um, they were bound to that. We, we got one somewhere, and we, you can, he can probably find a better one that came from somewhere else, 'cause Cloud talked about it before. But the sheriff and I had a conversation. We were both on exactly the same page. If it goes a month or so, then just help them out. And that's about six thousand dollars. But going forward, you know, you can see no stop. And we don't have it.
And, and we don't like it. We have to call.
But I think in this situation, he's just throwing out, giving them an officer, and it's pure overtime. So in the future, you know, hopefully they'll get to a point where it's just help them occasionally or that kind of thing.
Yeah, we just, I mean, I, I understand we needed the cars, and I mean, actually, we, we, we try to do what's right and what's needed. You know, it's just, you know, we just have to be very cautious of our, our reserve. I mean, you know, I, I, we, we need a lot. I'm glad we could help you with those two cars, you know, and, uh, cars are hard to find. I mean, I, I agree one hundred percent. I, I looked for about three months for one vehicle, so I mean, if it was, if I didn't go that hard with five, I'd probably overdo it, 'cause, but I mean, 'cause I just know now, I think we're fixing to get into a recession. I'm just gonna be, take a minute. I think money's gonna be tougher. I think incomes are gonna, uh, not get what you need to be, you know, and people's gonna stop giving necessities, and they're already still in left and right. I mean, so, uh, you know, we just have to be very, very cautious of, of our dollars and our reserves. I just, in the back of my head, I mean, six hundred thousand dollars, I thought that's, to me, that's ten mils. We're gonna have to figure out where to get from somewhere. And so, uh, you know, not, I mean, not direct, Sheriff, I mean, just, and, and us thinking, I mean, we've got ten mils to, to make up. I understand, you know, they think we can make it up, but that's all assumptions with everything moving around. But I mean, number goes up, things go up, I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna get tough. And I mean, I don't want to see us have to get back to a place to follow employees and stuff for, for working and, and not having it. So, you know, uh, I think for, like I said, I know these, these cars will be used well, but we just, uh, like I said, we just have to be very cautious about, you know, spending.
Six thousand dollars, a negative impact on the sheriff's department, 'cause he's, um, he's had to spend money that was stepping for his people.
Correct.
And Sheriff, that was my only reservation on that. It's, uh, and the sheriff's department, I, I see is on here a lot for being over budget and, and understand a lot of this changeover. But as a businessman, I'm like, well, we gotta put the brakes on the thinking about this for a minute. But, uh, council did want to help you out with that, and, um,
I appreciate.
We got your two cars.
I don't wanna be over budget at, uh, but when you have a shift, people gotta come to work. I mean, you can't work what we got. When you have stuff happening, I mean.
The only thing is, it's all coming out of money that we, we're trying to do other things in the county for the people, and we, we only got like, like, uh, we only got so much money.
We can figure out how to tell a citizen to do what they need to do.
Well, uh, okay, so we need to move on to our agenda. All right, moving down to the recreation initiative.
I still have some financial stuff that really probably should have been done before y'all spent more money, but anyway. This, this you have in front of you, and I just want you to, to see it in a place that makes sense. So the column, the, the column here is what the budget was last fiscal year to begin with, where it ended up for this year, and to change the amount of money that went up, um, year over year. So you can see, you know, that's about one point two million dollars, an increase of your expense budget that happened with the budget you just approved. So, you know, you're all involved in it, and you can kind of remember the pieces of it. But with a five mil tax increase and with revenue growth, you had to make up for all that. So the concern is, you know, that if you. So the concern is, you know, that if you move into the next, you move into the next year, if you have, I don't know why I do it like that, you have to save it to increase, you're going to be in a fight. I mean, there is extreme pressure right now on what we pay people. Doris is here, you know, she's trying to hire people, and, I mean, everything from the people maintaining the grounds to the recreation director, finance, accounting person trying to hire, you know, there's extreme pressure there. And then honestly, inflation, we haven't, for whatever reason, we haven't really taken a hit on fuel yet, but, you know, it's going to come home to roost. Right now, our financial experts, which means we sit around and throw it back and forth, with inflation, you know, there's a chance we have an allowable seven and a half mil increase. Now, they tell you that you can go up. So if they did go up, it would be about this much money. Now, you'll note, Councilman Stein, that we have reached the point that we feel like a mil is worth sixty-five thousand dollars. And that comes from, believe it or not, in all of this, you know, doom and gloom, the value of property has gone, how people are paying more for houses, your tax on what you paid for something, so it ratchets it up. But that potentially could be all you could do legally out of taxes. And remember, last year, we had a one point two million dollar increase. So that's where you are.
So you said that with the three and five, if we lose the mohawk, I just still think in the back of my head, that still will come up to the six hundred. So whenever you said that sixty-five, it means...
Correct, that's not going.
Yeah, okay.
And with that too, or taxpayer, you know, there's some timing of when they take equipment out and all that, so it may skate by a little bit this year, but next year, yes.
I just look at, they're gone, so I mean, my mind is, you know, you're going to take it this year or the following year, so it's just after, we just have to start thinking.
Do they still pay taxes on the building that they have?
Yeah, if they pay it away, they got to pay taxes, yes. But the money was in the equipment. Yeah, but that's a good point. So, you know, it's not doom and gloom, but it is a financial report and it's real. And we, and we, you know, new council members, and we've got two groups of kind of newer people on here, in the last five or eight years, we haven't had to deal with this. We made progress here, covered our expenses, and you haven't even raised taxes on the times, but, you know, this is unprecedented, you know, we're on the edge of a recession and all those things that go with it.
There's no fire, no EMS, no, that's a tax.
Well, remember, I mean, school district, this is general fund. You have separate tax millage for road fire, you have separate tax millage for EMS. EMS has issues as well as for compensation, so they're going to need to have increases, so really, and it's independent of each other, this max is only per fund.
Yeah, I just think about the dollar, that, you know, people on fixed incomes is, you know, that's, that's my concern is, you know, we can say working people, when people on fixed incomes get an X, Y, Z a month, they're going to stop taking medicines or stuff that they truly need, you know, and that, you know, we're talking about seven, five here, you know, two here, one there. If the school district, if they raise up, I mean, you could be an extra good bit of money per year. That's, I mean, I know it's early, we just approved budget, but I mean, it's almost Christmas, so I just, I just worry about, I mean, it's just in that regard.
You're saying, you know, this mil, there's a percentage of what you could raise, so our current millage is a hundred twenty or a hundred fifteen, I can't remember. It's like a hundred twenty mils for general fund, so it's a percentage of that. So like EMS, it only has twenty mils, it would be less mils you could raise.
So when we're doing our budget and looking at it, are there ever any discussions with the school district about what that budget process looked like, and if they're trying to increase, and so we want to make sure we don't double taxing?
This time, this particular time, we contacted them and, you know, I know we met that bet, but I mean, they were not indicating a big increase, so that's, it's in the age of what we did, we got what's mentioned, and that, yeah, I mean, I think as, as good leaders in the community, you got to consider that, and all of a sudden, some other taxing entity's going to go way up.
It should impact what you're going to do.
You know, I was on council in oh eight, in oh eight, we had sent people home and for furlough, it was that bad. I don't, that'd be, I mean, I'm very much against that because you... The morale, and the fact that people were hurting from the recession as well, that's a last last resort, but they were serious guys. And what's difficult is that Sheriff Neil's no different than any other department head. Everybody is doing God's work in their area and with their thing, and they know what they need. And you have the difficult decision sometimes, as Solomon had to, split the bank, decide if we get to that point, I know you need this, or I know you need that, but we can't do it because we just don't have enough money. And, you know, we have a reserve, but I mean, that's not, that's there if everything crashes, and in oh eight, you know, we were close. Like in oh eight, I probably, looking back, think we should have gone and used that reserve to keep people, paying people instead of sending them home. But anyway, I won't go off, but you get the picture, I'm sure, and if you have any questions later on, you can call me or talk after the meeting.
Could we shift, like, let's say, recreation budget, you know, recreation wasn't doing a whole lot, could there be a shift in what we budgeted for recreation to another, you know, department order out of order?
Yeah, I mean, if you got in a crisis situation, you could, you first could not spend any money that wasn't being spent, so if you had a vacancy, you say, well, not freeze, hire and freeze. And the second thing is, you could shut things down, and, you know, God knows, we've seen with recreation, we've talked about recreation, and I'll be in that in a minute. But if you sat down and y'all were riding around, or, you know, I do my best thinking more than grass, if you had to prioritize county services, I'm talking about critical, essential services, you start to have things that are not, you know, that people aren't going to live and die over. I mean, I would argue that, you know, EMS fire is probably a tick above lawful, you know, because it's a, it's a ride now and go and die thing, but they're right there together, and you could, you know, how would you cut that? I mean, does that answer what you're, too long, but an answer. Okay, everybody optimistic? Okay, so we're talking about recreation programs, and I'll try to speed up because we used our time on the other stuff, but, you know, it's important to know that no, there's no money for new programs without new revenue. And we all know there are different ways to get revenue, fees and things like that, but programs at this point must pay for themselves, and revenue must be a sure thing. None of those are sure things, but, you know, it's got to be fairly sure that you can do those things. There are a lot of grants out there, a whole lot of grants that I think we could use for programmatic things, but we need to be sure that we've got the money to pay the light bill and that kind of thing. You know, above that, I think, being the county in the situation we are, we can get a lot of money out of grants that... Will help us do things, you know. So that's a good source of money, but just, we have to make sure that we can pay the light bill and the lease payments and those things. You know, I didn't put a slide in there, but, you know, you can charge fees, you can use property tax revenue if there is any, you could pass millage, you could have the voters consider it as millage for nothing but recreation. And we looked into it, because in 2016, I mean, I was hot and tried about something, Mr. Strumman and I talked about it, about doing the recreation thing, and the way we were going to pay for it was a penny saved back. But the law wanted us to do it because there are only about two in the county, and the school's already had two. And I had heard last week that it changed the law, so I got excited, I was going to come beyond saying, I mean, if you can pass a penny, if you can legally do it, it's over a billion and a half dollars a year. Think of where we could come up with a community improvement program of a billion and a half dollars a year. But it did change it. So the next best thing would be a dedicated property tax for that, but it is a property tax. So the good news, the good news of this, and I know I'll rehash it, but I think sometimes it's good to do this, is we got a pot of money, it wasn't our money, but we've got a pot of money. So we got four million dollars from Rescue Act, y'all set aside five hundred from the fund balance, if you remember, it's been a while now. Two million dollars from the state, we got, just got an email over the last week about how you're about getting that, so that's real. And then we're targeting, hoping for five hundred for private sources, and I think pretty sure a substantial part of that, anything related.
No, just got, yeah, I mean, this is confirmed, and we got the first portion of that, it's supposed to be coming in.
Okay. Is this verbal commitment is for a specific recreation project or whatever we desire to do?
Yeah, it is for the...
This is...
Yeah, it's for the one we're talking about, the golf course.
So if there was a shift, that money wouldn't be available?
Uh, no, no, that would be specific for that project.
Okay. You have to re-ask, I guess.
Yeah. Right, that's what I asked for.
Okay. So, everybody knows that, so you can totally go, you got a pile of gold there. So the first thing that we're going to go over is Mr. Strumman's passion and that's the water park quality for, and I tried to get up with it, I don't know if that was the right picture or it was another picture where he found it.
It's close enough, it's...
Yeah, so again, you know, we're repeating the same things everybody talked about, you know, depending on what you do, the cost can be from one, from two million dollars up. And we're at a point now, if council wants to proceed, that we really have to narrow it down to things, a location, which we've been working on, and I'll update you on, and then the scope of what you want to, what you want to do. You know, kind of like Sheriff's thing, he was saying is, right now, getting estimates from any kind of construction folks doesn't work. They don't, they don't want to give any kind of budget numbers, they want to see something, and they want to give you a short period on the quote. Okay, so the discussion about doing it out Jefferson Street, now I know this is kind of a mismatched power map, but assuming everybody got to get the bearings here, there's Country Park Line and the golf course, Jefferson Street, where the swimming area is now, where the boating area is now. And so this is, jump in, this is sort of the area, talking about doing it and then having an area of parking and extension. So the authority ahead wrote a letter and sent it to Sullivan, the Lake Authority, they met, he advised us that they were very interested, of course, they don't want to get into more detail, and he also advised us that the state, they have a state representative that comes to their meetings, a guy named Ross Self, and he says there are authorities to get, to get permission to use it. He says it's not impossible, but there are things that, you know, we have to jump through. So, but they, you know, they, they were excited about something happening because their office is going to improve the lake, and there didn't seem to be any opposition to the location.
I'm not sure, I've talked to some people who were not necessarily enthused about Jefferson Street being...
Really?
Yeah.
I don't doubt, I mean, if you're talking to them, this is kind of from Blair, but, you know, I guess the concern compared to the east side side is it is kind of narrow right there.
That's, that's why the other rendering that you, the first rendering that you put up, it's more a comparison of a narrow site, of course, it would have to be, you know, we would have to focus on what we want in that site, but if you can visualize the lake being on this side of Jefferson Street, the width and everything, it would be comparative to what we would, we could do, you know.
Will we have to purchase additional space for parking?
Those two lots above the, where those, those for sale signs are, right, those lots there would be the parking area that I was, you know...
Who owns that space?
It's been for sale for twenty years.
It's probably him, I mean, I don't, I don't want to run the price up, but it's for sale, it's probably him, and it's, nobody connected with anybody in the room that I know of. I don't even remember who this one is, but we can look it up, I can look up a map, won't you? On the GIS.
Realistically, the water park, they only going to be able to operate it, what, four months, four months out of the year, Mr.?
It's four months out of the year, but I do want you all to realize, four months out of the year, it's seven days a week in a four year. You understand? So, you know, and then you're still going to be operating at some point to keep up the maintenance and whatever the shops or whatever they want to be down there, so maybe the water park operation may be the theme area of maybe four months, but it's going to be a year-round thing, you're not going to be closed up.
I'll be honest, I've talked to a lot of people, and there's not too many people enthusiastic about this golf course purchase and this, this project that we are entering in, you know, from the county. Not too many people play golf, not too many people are necessarily interested in, but what people are interested in is a facility. They're interested in a multi-purpose facility that now can engage the entire county. With the golf course and this water park idea, it's a great idea, but we're talking about impacting the entire county. There's going to be only a handful of the county, probably forty-five percent of the county, honestly, would benefit from a massive project, you know, as we are undertaking, and I think if we're going to undertake something that is for the county, it needs to be something that can encompass the entire county, you know, older people, younger people, middle-aged people, all in one, and I don't think this golf course idea gives us that opportunity to really do that.
If I may, just so we can make it through, can you hold that, let me run through, and then let's, because I want to at least, it's like a minute ago, we're getting, y'all getting considering things before you see everything, let me run through it, because there's pluses and negatives, and quite frankly, I mean, at staff level, we're not married to any project, we want the one that's going to work and that y'all want. Okay, so there's that. Just a side note, the Lake Authority did share with us that they have an interest in building a, they call it a water walk on beauty spot, you know, if you ever go down there, people are fishing there on the road, and connect that trail there, of course, they, would we be interested in that too? Around this topic, so we can talk some more. But that's beauty spot, you know, that's the fishing, the wide side, and then that's what are they talking about doing? Okay? The aquatics feature, we're going to need to have somebody do a financial study because the only thing I've got that really, you know, I can look at is Hart's Fund, I know Mr. Strumman feels that that's not representative of this, so if it's not, then we need to look at something else. It is a much larger facility, much, much larger. It's open seventy-six days a year, you know, what are, that's the same as y'all were saying. They have seen a reduction in revenue from twenty-one, twenty-two, and they're subsidizing out of their taxes, but it is a different facility. So if the council moves forward, you know, we have to be confident in what we've got, and I think that's best to look at by Thursday morning, and we'll find somebody who can look at it and put into it the different things that make it unique in Marlboro County, as you've pointed out. Okay, I'm going to keep going. Golf course, okay, so we're doing these two things in parallel. We now have access, Wes and I have access to the current operating financial information, we signed a non-disclosure agreement, so we can't just put tax returns up on the screen, but we'll compile that into numbers. And so... The initial assessment from what we've seen is that it breaks even, but there's no debt, there's no lease payments on carts, if you go out there and play the carts in that condition, and they're primarily using part-time folks that don't have a lot of open yet. So that's how that's working now. There are the sources of revenue that you can find out there, obviously, carts and greens fees. We observed that they are playing anywhere from eighty-five hundred to ninety-five hundred rounds a year, that's, you know, we had a consultant look at this a long time ago, and everything we base is off of how many times people play golf. So, in the average now, there's different prices for, whether you're senior or you're playing industrially, or you're a member or whatever, but the average is probably twenty-three, twenty-five dollars per round right now. Of course, you can make money off selling stuff, you know, concessions, snack food and beverages, membership dues, so membership dues are mainly trying to get your money ahead of time instead of as you go, and it basically, if you pay in as a member, it reduces how much you have to pay when you go out there, all you have to pay is cart fee. So when we look at it, that's not additional revenue. You're either going to, you're either going to get it here or you're going to get it there. Does that make sense? And I may be telling you stuff that's obvious, so forgive me if I am. You can rent, facility rental, they have that banquet hall out there, they haven't done much of that, it's a potential source of revenue. They have driving reins, we were surprised to see a little bit of money going where you buy a thing of balls. If you were to do this, you could improve that, maybe get a little more out of it. Pro shop, you know, there's, the consultant will tell you that every time somebody plays golf, there's an average amount that those rounds, those people ought to spend for snacks or golf stuff or whatever. You know, I don't know how much that applies to here, but those are sources. Operating costs, this is probably the thing to really pay attention to more than the other, you obviously have labor, you've got kind of overall management place, and, you know, a golf person that maybe could be in charge of the programs and, you know, all that, then you've got the people actually maintaining and running the operations. If the county gets serious, more serious about this, then you've got to look at, do you make them employees of the county, or do you contract out some of that? When you think about that, if we put out a bid for somebody to do this, they're going to give us a price. If we put them on a county payroll, you're going to pay the thing that... If we put them on a county payroll, you're gonna pay the thing that anybody here pays as an employee, you can pay social security fight things like workers comp, but you automatically go add almost twenty percent of the cost because of retirement. I'm not trying to do anybody, but there are situations where you would be better to have someone who does this certain thing with golf course and they're not an employee. Plus, if you have a bunch of employees, when you get down to making tough decisions in any situation, you have a lot less flexibility cause you gotta fire somebody or let them go. Equipment, carts, there, there's a need for everything out there. They need carts, they need greens, mowers, any of everything. So when you look at, when we lay this out into a pro form, a spreadsheet shows you the income loss, you can either buy outright or lease it. If you lease it and you're adding hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars to your annual cost. If you buy it, it's gonna cost you seven hundred thousand dollars, maybe eight, out of that money you have, based on usage or operating. So it's kind of a, a this or that. Of course, maintenance, I already talked about, same deal. Other maintenance, we already talked about. And utilities, obviously, there are no options. You gotta pay the piper if you hook up to electricity. They do pour water out of, um, the pond out there, but they use electricity to run the pump. And so that sort of, the narrow now comes up with two different, right now, early on, two different strategies if you decide to go forward with this. And, um, I'm doing this so I know what I'm here to talk about. One is you, you lease the financing equipment and you try to grow the amount of people playing out there or the number of rounds to cover that. Cause if you just go finance the equipment, you're gonna be at a loss. And, and if, if you're playing ninety-five hundred, ten thousand rounds a year, you need to go up to twelve thousand rounds a year. So that means you have immediate pressure on you to increase the number of rounds. You know, you could also raise the cart fees and all that, but they're not, you could raise them a little bit and be right where Dillon and even the state park are. The other thing that you could consider is buy the equipment outright and then you could utilize the same, the, the current volume of play. So you wouldn't even have any pressure to increase the volume of play and you wouldn't have that note to pay on the equipment. And you could use that four, five, seven years to build the play and the next time you would, um, lease the equipment. Now, I've showed you, I've, I've got one more of this in here. This is the latest version of, of especially on that. Obviously, some things have changed and it has in it the buying of equipment. So that adds seven hundred and fifty to the bottom line. The bottom line with this model is a thirty-eight, uh, three point eight million dollars. Not opinions, this are facts for y'all to consider in your decision making. Okay, so that's golf course. Then the other thing that I put a slide in here, there seems to be a growing, um, interest in trying to improve the image of the community, clean up the other property, enhance things that, that we own, the city owns and all that. But there's some other sources of money that maybe you can tap that are specific to this, that can address some of this down here. And I think they're very important and they're all part of something I've been preaching since twenty seventeen. If it's gonna get done, y'all might have to do it. We're not, we can't seem to get anybody else involved. There needs to be some way to improve the way things look and that's gonna probably be some grant program. City has one, but I don't know how much it's totaled.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand dollars to do everything that looks, you know, bad. Revolver loan fund, I was an economic developer right in the name of Virginia County. We had a revolver loan fund and it was hugely impactful. And the way it worked was, you wanna start business, a restaurant, you wanna start whatever business, and you go to the bank and you need, you need a hundred thousand dollars and you're dealing with eighty-five, you gave your five to rest somewhere else. We would use this to cover that gap and you would be amazed at how much difference that made us for small business owners. And believe it or not, they had about a million dollars in it. And it would rotate enough that you had losses, cause you were looking at small businesses at risk. But the gains would outweigh it and it always seemed to be funded. And I've got details on that, but I believe that's something that could be considered. And then the other thing I say incentivizing businesses, it, it takes this into account somewhat. But also, you know, if you've been involved in a business and you have got your utilities positive and somebody ran a welding shop before, your product's gonna be based on the welding shop. And I think that we, um, you know, that's something worth discussing and discussing with the city about trying to make it where you can get in somewhere and get going and not use your money that you were using to buy inventory or operation place. I, I really believe that we can improve the way things look if we can have some activity downtown. It's gonna create a positive impact. Those things can feed off of as well. And I'm talking about much more.
Scotland, Scotland County, uh, they have that, they got a pretty good program with that Scotland and City of Longburg. Cause they just red waved a borrowing bill on Main Street. They did a bidding at for Todd Stubbs and, uh, Boa McClaren. They completely renovated that old dilapidated two-story building and have got a beautiful building sitting on that corner over there. So I think that is, uh, the, uh, the revolver loan program and, and working with this incentivized new business, that's what we gotta do. We've got, we've got to make the candidates look better for people willing to come. And Scotland County, I, I looked at that one, they took one of those little alleys and made a little alley like we got in San Manuel, Maine. Before it was a bunch of wood and stuff there and then I'm thinking, that's like Michael Park, it's about in the middle of town. So that's where we gotta go, you know? We got to do something to attract people to come here. And spend money, like a restaurant or a wedding sandwich or whatever, whatever.
Well, again, I mean, if you go, if you, if you go back, it wasn't a pile of money, it's something to apologize, you know? You know, if you come up with a comprehensive program that creates a new facility or whatever and you still have some way to do this, you know, we've had a tendency over here in this county and out from here to fix something really nice and three things around to follow in. You gotta somehow stabilize this thing. And like, maybe I've said this in this group before, the, the town of Vanville, Virginia, they went into a blighted area and they didn't have the money to fix the buildings, but they went in and they fixed the facade. And when you looked in the window, you saw sometimes a black painted plywood wall. And then they had common signs and everyone that said, if you're thinking this, here's your contact and all that. So they didn't have the money to fix them up. When you walked down there, you didn't think, you know, somebody's gonna jump out and get you or someone's gonna hit you in the head. Those are the things that I think are worth looking at. And there are, there are grants for some of this and the city that I know is looking into them and all, but, you know, we've kind of waited around for a long time.
I think we might have to hold not only the city at Benesville, but all of the cities in Marlboro County hand and drag them into the twenty-first century. I think that's something that's gonna be really important, this revolving loan fund and incentivizing, um, new small business. I think that's how we grow from within, that we are trapped, you know, other than we, we hitting singles and now we, we got, you know, uh, uh, where somebody hit the, the grand slam. I think that's gonna be the future of Marlboro County, us building ourselves from within and incentivizing new small. There's a lot of great people here that got ideas, just don't have the funds and the opportunities.
Well, we're sitting here, but it's a whole lot of the job. Well, if we sit around in the community and we hang our hat on traditional economic development, we are constantly sitting here covered up, waiting for somebody sitting in a desk in a landowner to make a business decision that they're gonna close the plant and it has a huge impact. If we can through a combination of this, a combination of vocational education, which ain't going anywhere fast, but there's some momentum. And create an economy of our own by having brick masons or, or, you know, photographers or have this, our own economy of people who can make their own living, but they're not dependent on some company that's not here. And we can all beat ourselves up over the law, but I mean, they made a business decision sitting there. We can have a time back. I mean, I'm sure they cater the, the big, our offices, we can have ours. We're constantly under the gun if we continue down the path, so. Um, okay. Sorry, I'm trying to get along with it. The, uh, the last thing is, um, Councilman Woods, who couldn't be here, had asked me, it sounds like what you said about, um, an indoor facility. And this is the one that is very basic, when you see it. This is what we had at the time. We were looking at one in twenty sixteen. So it was on that, that area and that's what it was. I'm not saying this is what they do, I'm just showing you cause he asked. That particular facility had a pool and all these, um, activity areas that had splattered there, which is not what you're talking about, but that is what it is. At the time, I think it came in at three point three million dollars. I god knows what it would cost now. And we were gonna pay for it with, um, that money. And then we also had this plan at the time. This is behind our building over here. This is county building. Is to go down the hill and put these fields in and fix a little park, parking. I think the end, the end plan there was a bigger ball field because it could use the dugout as a amphitheater thing. Again, just threw it in there cause of Councilman Woods asking about it. Okay, I'm, I'm done. I'm gonna hear what y'all say, take notes and try to do what y'all want us to look into. Did I put anybody to sleep?
Yep. Were there any, any questions for? No question. I, I, I think the golf course idea was a, a good thing issue, um, push. But like I said, as I've talked to, I think I talked to about a hundred and twenty-five people and somewhere around eighty-five percent really not interested in the golf course. They're not interested in, you know, us putting all of our money into, you know, this golf course idea with the other enhancement. But almost seventy-six percent of them was like a facility, yes. Uh, 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 some type of multi-purpose facility where we can, you know, begin to engage, you know, elderly people, young people, um, you know? And I'm inclined to believe that's, that's the route to go. It's indoor, we can control, you know, some of the, the stuff that we can't control and how it's funded and how it's, uh, uh, you know, the maintenance and all those things. Uh, that's something that we have to strategize and, 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 and see how it can be. But, you know, I think we'd be remiss if, if we allow, you know, this opportunity. We had this opportunity one time in ninety-six. You know, and we still see the remnants. Every time I drive past, you know, primary and media school, I just look and see how much money we put in the ground, you know, over there for that property to be, but twenty-five, twenty-six years later and still in the same condition it was in nineteen ninety-six, I think we have an opportunity. Like I said, the golf course was a, 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 a good idea, but the more I talked to, you know, people and that, and that's, I'm, I'm listening to the lens of the people. They don't necessarily want us to put that money into a golf course.
Well, with the golf course, you get, uh, the clubhouse, which you could do multiple things with for the community. You can have a meeting area there, a multifunctionary, uh, you could turn it into a restaurant like they did in, in Rockingham where, uh, the, the city went in and they, they built a restaurant and then they bidded it out. I think, uh, Tim Patton is running that restaurant.
But we're still looking at the percentage of people that's gonna benefit from that space. Do you really do think that's gonna be the lowest percent?
Well, if you're talking about golfers, I mean, you know, that might be a lower percentage, but getting the pool back going, that pool hadn't been open in several years. We don't have a community pool here at all and, uh.
And that'd be optimal.
That would be, well, you really could put, I mean, we could figure out some way to put, uh, an enclosure around it. It could be.
I'm just speaking on, you know, behalf of the hundred and twenty-five people that I, that I've talked to, which is almost the amount of people that we put into this survey, you know, that I don't think. And I, I talk to people from different, you know, races and different demographics. I think that study gave us, what? The average person, like fifty-eight that participate in a study. I, I've got a, a, a compilation, you know, people. And not many people were really interested in us putting this amount of money, you know, into a golf course, you know?
Everyone I talked to was positive about it, but does anybody else have?
Of course, I've, I've, um, I've tried to take a pulse of the community as well. And I've got, I've got great reviews, uh, for, uh, the project that we're, that we're talking about. And, you know, and of course, you know, you get people to have other ideas as well, so, you know, I'm willing to debate either, either issue, so, um, I'm not, I'm not married to any particular project, but, um, there is merit into, um, serving the citizens here in Marlboro County, the elderly, the young and everything. There's merit into that. And there's also merit into getting something that's gonna generate revenue, um, and get the tourist dollar and, and, and get our, um, bread and breakfast facilities, uh, back in business and, and getting the downtown units, you know, where people are visible and, you know? So, you know, I, I don't know, but it is a, um, there's got to be a, a happy medium in there somewhere. I do believe that the golf course and, uh, the aquatic center, uh, is the best, um, idea. But of course, you know, other people can have different ideas, so I'm, I'm open to their ideas as well.
The big, the big thing on any of this operation, I mean, you, we, you know, we made that one purchase by operating any, any one, any one of them. How, how long does we, do we have until the?
Twenty twenty-four, you have to be committed into where you're going.
Twenty twenty-four. Okay, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, and you gotta spend it by twenty-six.
You gotta spend it by twenty-six, you gotta be ready by that time.
Commit.
I mean, just, I just.
By twenty-four.
You know, uh, I, you know, just operations, I mean, y'all, y'all were kind of looking at the books or looking at the books of the, of the golf course. Uh, they look, seen some of the, or the one time thing for the, for the water park. Uh, you know, even the thing that we looked at years ago in twenty sixteen, we don't have nothing for yet, probably, do we?
We did this.
Yeah, I mean, but this way, I mean, it wasn't, it would be, uh, you know, so, uh.
I'd go to Chesterfield and find that out today. I think I've got a line, see?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're a little bit more, they're a complicated a little bit better than ours. I mean, that's what you, something like that.
Good.
We've been on that trip over there, look at.
For a county as large as Marlboro County not to have its own multi-purpose facilities and traffic. Every other county around here has a multi-purpose facility. Dillon County took our blueprints, our own blueprints and built their wellness center with our information. And we sitting here from nineteen ninety-six to twenty twenty-two, one to twenty twenty-three, we still not, don't have a, a comprehensive, um, uh, multi-purpose facility in our county. Shame on us.
The thing Dillon's got, I'm jealous of, is they're, they're getting penny, all very dollars spent, but that means, you know, it's paying for all kinds of stuff. I think, you know, having been here, you know, active around here for fifteen years and caught around when we talked about this, the problem we have is the problem we have with everything is it keeps coming down. And so we do, we compete, we have a little this, a little that, somehow we gotta, you know, while we're sitting here, Ash and I want to do, you know, do just take five hundred or a million dollars of that and go in and long channels fixing the image and trying to do a ball and home thing and that, so we're not losing ground. I mean, that's something.
Also, also with that thought, that train of thought, um, with the, the golf course, that's just a tremendous buy. I mean, particularly now, you know, I know the cost went up, but particularly now that we have, uh, a donor that's willing to donate to that, to the, we'll be, we'll be dialing them to not, to not do that. You know, every county has a, a county course, you know, that, um, you do. And I know there's a certain percentage of people that play golf, but there's, there's also a lot of people that can use that facility for other things as well. Particularly if we, we dress it like we're supposed to. I don't wanna miss out, I wouldn't wanna miss out on that.
Hold on, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I had been approached by corporations, ARS, uh, being one, and they would like to have a corporate, like, uh, membership or something like that. And I think that'd be a, a big plus if, to, to draw other industries in there.
Come on, you know, industry gonna come.
They do, they do have something to do here. And they have, they have a pool for the, the family to go to and they'll have a clubhouse and maybe a possible restaurant. Um.
Can I, can I ask you a question over there? I'm trying to take something away.
Yeah, how, how long, yeah, no, I was gonna say, how long do we have, like, I mean, the, the season?
January third first. And I, I mean, they didn't know whether anything we presented today is a recommendation because we have only now got that. So my question, you know, concerning like golf or anything, is, is, is the concern that we spend everything on one thing, you know what I'm saying? Like if, if we figured out some way to go build what we're talking about, the, the other thing, the multi-purpose thing, next to the community center now there, you had this big complex, you know, or you built that, the water thing. Is that still, there's still a concern about the golf or, or is it a concern that it's gonna exclude most of the listeners that have to?
No, 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 no. No, no, if, let, let's say there was, you know, some phase in, phase one, phase two, three. The golf course is, is, is a great idea, but for us not to have a multi-purpose facility and we have an opportunity to do it and for us to defer that to a golf course, I think, you know, we, we, we need to look at. Now, you were talking about the penny sale tag at the school district. Are there any other innovative, you know, ways of? Are there any other innovative, you know, ways of, 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 of bond referendums or anything else that we can do as a community?
But you, but you saw the, uh, approved other people. Which is anything but too, but I think people were a little more open to that because it's kind of catching the tour of the golf. They really need some property tax.
That's right, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, and you're looking at, uh, we pretty much, you know, we get it pretty innovative and we hash it around and, uh, yeah, you, you could, I mean, that's great if you're wrong, but you basically set it up to where the entire county is a special purpose taxing district for recreation. And then you can lay the taxes, but you gotta have other people. It's gotta be in the general election year, which is in two years. So, yeah, yeah, you can do that.
What about corporate part? I think, you know, Tom, he mentioned that the co-op may have been interested in the golf course as well?
I, I heard that, but I never heard that official. I mean, I actually didn't make that call. But I caution you against, you and you, what you said is, that's good, but that's not going to pay the note when they leave you and change their mind. So I think that's more for developing programs. So if you, if you build up a facility or you build a water park or you bought the golf course and you had the fundamentals in place, then you use that money to have a first tee, I think, program is called Kids to Get In Involved in Golf or a swimming lesson or whatever. Yeah, I'm not discounting programs, but we gotta figure out, we gotta be making sure we can keep the life of the core of the area.
By, by the golf course, we would have the land right next to a perfect, the community center down there. That, we could do a, uh, a wellness center or multi-purpose thing and incorporate it in what we've already got there in the, uh, community center here in our community.
So if, if we sell this project not just as a one-time, as a continuous, you know, phase in, I think that would be a better buy-in for the community, knowing that there's other things that we're looking, you know, to do versus, you know, because I've had some people like, man, six million dollars on a golf course? Like, man, I, I can't, you know, you know, but if we can sell it that this is, you know, this is something that we're doing as a phase in, you know, project for a full, or, you know, overhaul that includes some type of multi-purpose facility, I think that's a better sale for the community than, because I mean, you know, people not going to look at the intricacy of what we're looking at. They're just looking at us purchasing the golf course and spending money to re-up a golf course when they don't play golf.
No, I, I, my, my thought was that we would develop that land out there and, and, and ultimately have something that would be for the community, whether it was part of the water park and then we add it and suggest that, I want to, to, uh, strum with this idea.
The whole line was originally sort of was like, we needed something, something we could build around. And the golf course was ideal that if we could get a good price, which I think that come down a lot, but you, you, you do the basis of the golf course as something to build around. And like Dr. Johnson said, build a, a multi-purpose facility. I think, I think you could do it all, except particularly if you can build a lot of this. But the, but the golf course though, if you build, if we upgrade the golf course to where we bring people, uh, corporations and people out there, build a nice restaurant and then, how many, everybody sits at this table, everybody tells you that every week, there ain't a nice restaurant in this county that people can go to. You build a nice restaurant around the office once it's upgraded and then you upgrade the swimming facility. What's to say we couldn't have two swimming facilities? One in the multi-purpose thing and then the pool there. But, uh, I think that, uh, we don't need to, uh, we don't need to, uh, just walk away from that and, and start looking somewhere else maybe just to, to build a, a multi-purpose thing. I think we, I think we need to lump it all together and try and make it, like I said, a continuous thing where we're going to continuously be upgrading stuff.
Well, I say on that note, it's a liability, I, sorry, liability if, uh, if someone gets that. Uh, from our, they, they, they think we got all this land and it's valuable and they come in here about and they turn it into like, uh, a horse form or something like that, like they had, they did with the Clyde Punch Club and just shut it down, but...
I'm not trying to say to your job, but I can see people's faces and I see you trying to say something. I mean, I, I know we always talk about working together, working together, working together. The city owns the community center, correct?
Yeah.
You know, is it, you know, if we're talking about phase one, phase two, phase three, you know, the community centers there is built, it's owned, but it's the, they, they do no record. The city just does, does the city have any recreation?
I think mainly their stuff are like little events and all.
Okay, so they, so they...
It's not designed for that.
No, 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 but they, they have, they do no recreation in the city, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so would that be something that you could look into? I mean, it still ties in all the areas, uh, you know, if, if we talk about bringing people to the, to the table to, you know, have a, well, if we can't do the penny, you know, you can only get a few amount of dollars from each one to be able to, to take care of operations or something is, they could set stuff to the side in their budget just like we can to operate.
Well, I mean, it's, 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 yeah, I mean, for Mr. Park, you know, Park time has been, been in the world with the, with the tourism money to, to, but, but, let me just say something that probably get me in trouble, but I haven't stopped it before. All you hear is, oh, the city wants to work with the county, the county wants to work with the city. You have a meeting, oh, we need to have a meeting, we need to sit together, we all say that. What needs to happen, in my opinion, is everyone's sitting there, needs to talk to everyone they know there and say, we really need to work together. Okay, because there's a lot of, when you have everybody in the room, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. But there's a time in, in our history right now where we need to combine things that are duplications. And we need to leverage things that are theirs, which is, I think, what you're saying. So if we had that building down there and we, we have a deal with them and we can make it part of it, that may provide the foundation for a bigger facility. It's not a bad facility. But there's two problems. There's everybody, I'm not going to pick on the city council because I don't think it's all them, I think it's everybody. Is, oh, yeah, 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 and then really doesn't happen. And the second thing, the more important thing is, you can say, you know, work together all you want to, but if you don't bring your checkbook to the party, it don't mean nothing.
That's, that's my whole thing is, if you have, if you have a, a, if, I mean, just said, if you have a golf course, a county, whatever golf course, and a city, whatever, community center, could you come together and have it as a, as some type of, that, all of it, it's a wellness center, it's a pool, it's, it's, everything is a complex. You know, bring your checkbook to the table, you, you put a certain amount in, the county puts, because it's going to cost to operate. I mean, you know, it's going to be, I still think it's going to be hard to take in, you know, on any of it enough money to subsidize it completely. I mean, it, it, maybe I'm wrong, I mean, but you know, I think you're gonna, I think, I think you, you, we get some foundation where you say, well, we can, we can absorb some of the gap, but we will, everybody invested in it where we make short moves forward.
And my opinion is, the county need to decide what they're going to do and the county needs to do it. If we depend on the city, we will never have nothing. And that's my, I done been here long enough to know. You go to the table with them, it's never nothing. And if we're going to do something, we need to do it. Let, let's don't bet on for nothing else, is the way I feel about it. And that's the truth.
Well, I, I think, not to, uh, no, I mean, you, you told me that, since, I, I, I have a little bit of a different hybrid kind of thing is, I think, I think that y'all need to figure out what you want to do. If people want to have some input, fine, and then go to ask for specific things. I think the problem is, and everybody, oh, we need help, we need help, we need help. No, we're doing this and this is what it is and we'd like you to be involved and, you know, it can be a good thing for all of us, if not, we're rolling on. Because we're sitting here a year into, a year into this, talking it. I think we probably had unrealistic expectations, all of us, that we could put this together quickly, but, um, but we are a year in, but, I, I hear you, but you've been... As long as I've known you. And it, it's frustrating to me because I hear, you know, people say that we don't want to work with anybody. That's not true.
Go ahead.
We, we started a whole, this conversation, not today, but, um, in the past, we talked about phases, phases, united phases. It's not a new concept, you know what I mean? Um, she talked about a wellness center back when we first brought the idea up, you know what I mean? It's not a new concept, you know, at, at, at all, but we have to do it in phases rather, you know, but we have to be focused on a project first. And once we get the ball rolling, I do think that everybody probably going to jump in on board because they're going to see the county moving without it. You know, and it was actually supposed to go in the paper, uh, when we purchased the golf course as the first phase. That's the way that we wanted it reported, you know? It didn't, it didn't come out like that, but that's the way it should have been, um. And then, then the citizens will know that we're not just purchasing a golf course because, yeah, that's a, that's a flat fault, you know? That's just one dimension, you know? But we have, we have, we should have put it out to where they could understand it. I want to, actually, I wanted a rendering of, of phase one, phase two, or whatever we thought would be, you know, so...
And I know you did and you pushed me on that, but I can't render what I don't have five people telling me to do. And I'm not picking on you, picking on everybody, but from what I, Dr. Johnson brought it up and I, we're going to agree on something here. Everybody's watching, right? If the golf, if you come out and you spend the whole nut on a golf course, that's maybe not going to be as well-received as you want. If you can figure out a way to do that and something else substantial, either at the same time or very close to the same time, then that may be a win for everybody. Particularly if you can have it in the same area, whether it's a wellness center or whatever. Just off the top of my head, and it, and I hope I don't get held to this, but in looking at cost, um, kind of what you found on the other thing was like, two, two and a half million to do it right. Uh, the golf course, in what you saw today, was about three and a half million. The numbers I saw on a small YMCA kind of thing were like 5.9 million dollars. So, you know, the other way to look at it is to go ahead and cipher on that $7 million and how do you get what you want? You know, and what is the core thing or, you know, or whatever? You know, if you follow the money, usually you'll come out all right.
Ms. Plainer, you got something to say?
Okay, what I was going to say is that, um, I know I'm going to be gone in a couple of months, but I'm hoping and praying that this will come about for is what we're talking about, Mr. Johnson. Everybody here agree that we do need, uh, something that would involve not only the golfers, but everybody in Marlborough County can have a piece of and enjoy. And I'm looking, I, I, I hope that that work, just like you say, it's a lot of things you have to look at and decide on whether, whether you can go that route or not, or do this right now and then maybe down the road do something else later. But whatever it take, I hope, hope that it can work because we do need something here that, uh, and I, I talked about this several months ago, a wellness center, a higher of a, a, a complex for people to go in and enjoy. And I would love to see that happen. And although I probably, I know I won't be on the board no more after December, but I'm still going to be in the corner pulling for it. You know, that it will take place. And then y'all will probably get tired of seeing me come to the meeting, but I'm going to be peeping in to see what's going on. But I hope that it will work. It can work if we pull together. No, let me, so, no, no, let me take this back. It can work and it will work if we put, stick together and pull together. Now, City, I don't know about them, but that's another horse, another color. But you, you, all you can do is go and try and ask them and see what they will do. Whether they will do anything, I don't know, but just like Mr. Blackman saying, if we set a weight on there, we might not get nothing done. But then you might surprise them, Mr. Blackman, they might come up, you surprise them. I come aboard and say, okay, we want a piece of action, you know, we just have, hope for the best, you know? But I really would love to see that happen. I really do.
The second part, she just got her name upside down there.
I was thinking, how much you have?
I mean, I know we meet again in a couple of weeks. I think, you know, uh, I guess it's a couple of weeks, you know, I mean, apparently we're not, we're not, we're going to kick the cans today at least for another couple of weeks, uh, but could, I mean, in the wellness center, could you kind of get a, kind of a rough number on this, but?
Yeah.
And I think the next meeting, I mean, I just, I don't want to cut anybody out, but I think the next meeting, if we, if we don't decide, we are going to be kicking, because you're going to get into holiday season, they're hurting to get done, so, I mean, I think we'll have to...
Okay, well, what I was, what I was hearing is, um, try to tighten the numbers down, um, try to get, you know, more budget numbers on things. You know, I'm not pushing it off, it's just the easiest thing because we're looking at filling it out. But, you know, take what you're talking about and actually lay it out and get somebody to say this costs that, the community center thing. Do you, does council, is there any opposition to me approaching the city administrator about would they even entertain the idea of encompassing their existing center into something new? I mean, I'm not talking about taking some, you know, we got, you know, not making something that's not nice, but if you did come off the side of that with similar architectural design, you might could have something, y'all, anybody have a problem with that? I mean, they're, you know, they're, they're having some turmoil right now, but, you know, it's worth asking.
But even, even at that, I mean, if they decided they didn't want to do it, even if we did our own thing right next door to it and, and used the architecture of that building...
Well, the property, the, the golf course property goes like right up against it. That's a good point.
I think we need that property now and I think we need to give staff, uh, permission to go ahead and close out the deal on that, on that property, I, I feel like. Uh, I mean, everything keeps coming back and we need that land. And we can't afford for that golf course to close up for good and I think we could do some good things.
I thought you were all ready at that point.
Okay, let's remind everybody, we earned a contract with them. We have till January 31st to buy it or not buy it. So I understand that, but I, I would like for us to go another round with what we're doing.
Do we have that in two weeks? You think we're definitely April 10th?
We can try, but again, you got till January 31st.
I think we stretch it out until, even if we know that we mean towards purchasing it, stretch it out until, you know, get to the, the, the end of it and they may come down another $50.
Well, I mean, I was going to say something about that a minute ago, because three, three of y'all have said this. What you're paying for is, is a small fraction of the cost of this thing. So everybody's like, oh, and I've heard it in the community, oh my God, how much did it cost? Well, you know, I'll give, Chairman Kirby, he's gone out and secured the money, about zeros that out. But what you see on here running it up is irrigation, I mean, that's the problem. So it's not really the cost, they're not going to change the price because they're under contract. I mean, why would you? I mean, if we buy it, you're going to pay what is in the contract. But I would like for us to go another round on it. I don't think you're in danger of anything. And if there's grant money, you know, it could be right there. And certainly in the next month or so, you can have it where, where you can make a decision. And that would give us, I don't know about two weeks, but we can try.
But in November.
We can have another one of these and, and it'd just be recreation and we don't hijack it with the stuff we're talking about or share stuff or whatever. We can lay these other pieces out and begin to put puzzle together. If that's okay with y'all, I mean, so, so talk to the city, see if there's any interest, even, 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 you know, y'all follow the ones y'all talk to, because some of y'all are more actively talking to people on there and, and, you know, all right, here's a chance now, we're going to really do it, you know? Um, we'll get better budget prices on things we can, including some of these things with the, the downtown stuff that revolve along from that kind of thing. Is that all right? One thing too, I was going to mention that, uh, Johnson or somebody brought up. The grants you can get to demo, demolish derelict property are CDBG grants. And from what I understand, every local government is eligible to go after them. There is a 15% match.
Yeah.
Okay, so say Clio, and I, I hope we're close to having their financial issues straight. Say McCall wants to participate in that. You could go and allocate that 15% match in here and say, we want your main street going through your town to look good because it impacts us. And we'll cover the match. That's, that's innovative. You know, that's a way for us to put a little bit of money in there and make a big impact there, when they don't, they'll never have the money to do it themselves. Everybody's...
Right, that sounds good.
All right, so I, I hope, I hope all come together.
I'm tired of cutting bait. I'm serious.
Yeah, I would, but I like to vote on that. But we, we hold off for two weeks and, uh, and, and I'd like us to go ahead and, in two weeks, give, uh, staff...
Well, I think you get him time to do the numbers before, I mean, before we vote, I mean, that's, uh, I don't want to overstep. I mean, I, I want him to push stuff and we, we do something, you know?
You gotta make good decisions here. This $7 million is, is gone, is gone. And if you go and spend $7 million on, on whatever and it, it loses money the first year, you, you just saw what, police cars. I mean, you know, you'd be arguing about buying tires for the police cars. So I know there's a sense of urgency and I know that there's people in, in people's faces like, do something. But that's where everybody has to hang together and go, we are, go watch the thing, look, we talked this hard today. There's a real danger, in my opinion, of getting in a hurry because there's people, you know, upset about it.
Like what I said, you... Well, listen, look back 50 years, look back 50 years. It hasn't changed, we've, we've been sitting on old for a long time. I mean, I know we got some buses riding and we got some other stuff, but it's time for us to do something. It's time.
I disagree with Councilman Crum, but you are, you're not giving yourself enough credit. I mean, this thing is the hot potato for months and months and months and months. And I think we're a lot closer than you think, other than trying to decide what pieces are.
Well, my, my thing is this, I know I'm pro water park, but if we're going to vote on the, a facility or a building, we need to do it. We don't need to sit there and do that another year, you know, whatever, we need to make a decision. That's what the, the people are asked to do. That's what they voted us in to do, is to make the tough decision.
But we gotta have some good facts to back that.
Every, 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 every meeting we come to... Every, 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 every meeting we come to, we need facts and facts and facts and facts. And we need, you know, we need to go ahead and get the facts and so we can make a decision.
We, we, I think we are, you know, and it's, it's supposed to be.
But I'll go ahead, I'm gonna cut you off.
This meeting was supposed to be the, the fact meeting.
You don't think it's a sign? You don't think it was in?
Yeah, I'm saying that, but I understand, yeah, we, I, I think we got enough facts to make a decision. But, you know, I would need more of them.
From my perspective, I've got you in there about this, other people in here about other things and all, and you, we've got to have it where all of y'all can make a decision on what you wanna do, and I think we are bringing in the facts. I understand your patience, I do. But you know, I buy thirty-seven thousand dollar dogs, you're angry.
And you, and you really talking about the facts on phase two, because we, I mean, phase one and two would consist of buying that property and three, you know?
And, and two, fact is, it seems to me that uh, water park isn't necessarily the way for us to go.
It may not be.
And I'm not, nothing, you know, I'm not saying.
It may not be, and I'm fine with that, but we have to go somewhere.
From what is showed everywhere else, it just, it just isn't working. Now, I'm not saying let's do, let's do something, but I don't think we need to put that much money into something that's already proved not to be working somewhere else that, that close to us. And, and it's nothing against you or nobody else, I just don't feel like it'll be used um, enough to justify the cost of it. And, you know, and I don't mind having one, I'd get three of them if it, if it'll work. But uh, I just, I just don't think, why do we think ours is gonna work when our neighbors isn't working?
Their, theirs closed down for COVID, they go open a year, a half a year, it closes down.
Yeah, but still, I mean, six hundred thousand dollars that is costing them a year, that there's no way Marlboro County don't even compare with them. Ours is gonna be eight hundred thousand, and where, where we gonna get eight hundred thousand dollars?
And then one is four months, and the other one is a year.
I, I think it needs to be said so everybody can be thinking about it. And, and it's not nothing towards anyone, but it's just a serious money deal. And, and that's just, you know, my opinion, that's all, you know?
Okay, well, I think we had a good meeting, uh, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor?